Good morning, everybody. I think, Tisha, if you could mute your line, please. Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everybody. We are going to be calling the meeting to order shortly. If you would just give us one moment, please. Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to be calling the meeting to order now at ten o'clock, and if you would please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. And say with us, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to move into public comment at this time. If there's any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda, we would welcome the opportunity for you to have public comment at this time. Is there anybody who would like to speak on for public comment? Okay, seeing no one at this time, we are going to go into our meeting minutes from our last meeting last week. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the February ninth Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right, for our first elections item, we are going to turn it over to our team in elections. We heard Tisha Stefanka on a little bit earlier. I don't know if she was would be coming back, but we can run through it here. It would be pull this back. This is a certification of county maintenance of effort of expenditures for the administration of the voting programs at a level that is not less than the level of such expenditures maintained by the county for fiscal year ending prior to November of twenty two thousand. And this is essentially for the Help America Votes Act financial assistance that we receive every year. We would just need to make sure that we are good to go with that. And so this would be for the period of this year was the amount of one million thirty-five thousand nine hundred three dollars fifty-four cents. So we'd look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve the certification of county maintenance of effort of expenditures.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, we will turn it over to Natalie Corman for these items on Human Services. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning. So on behalf of the mental health and intellectual disability, earlier you mentioned drug and alcohol office. I have four contracts for the board this morning. All four of them are the remaining seven months of the the funding that we received from the state budget to allow for funding throughout the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And each one of these contracts, strawberry fields is for early intervention services. Care for People Plus is for services related to our intellectual disability services. Center County Youth Service Bureau, specific to mental health services, and then also Center County Youth Service Bureau for our drug and alcohol services, specific to prevention. So each one of our program offices are represented today to fulfill contracts to the end of the fiscal year with the state funding.
Okay, any questions for Natalie on this? Hearing none. Okay, hearing none, all, would there be a motion then?
Motion to approve the four items for mental health, intellectual disability, early intervention, drug and alcohol.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to turn it over now to Krishna from our Planning and Community Development Office for a discussion on an MOU.
Good morning, Commissioner Pike, Commissioner Higgins, and Steve, Commissioner Dersham. The the MOU that's being presented today represents a three-party agreement between the developer, township, and the county, whereby the developer agrees to reimburse Benner Township in this case for the costs associated with the township engineers processing, reviewing, inspecting, and approving the engineering details of the plan. Now, I'm going to attempt to share my screen because I have a two slides that I'd like to show the board as well as the folks back home. So give me a minute while I pull this up. Okay. The memorandum of understanding that's being brought before the board this morning is a preliminary land development plan called the Benner Pike Shopping Center, and it's located in Benner Township, and it's prepared by Penn Terra Engineering out of State College. This proposal represents a preliminary plan submission, and it's going to show the development of five commercial buildings, which includes a supermarket and fueling area, two fast food restaurants, a coffee fast food restaurant, and an office medical building along with the corresponding infrastructure. Now, the first slide that I have up on the monitor is just a location map showing the the location. It is relative to some surrounding tracks of land. So the area that's outlined in blue is the property that's being developed. I believe it's about a fourteen to fifteen acre tract of land. And across the street is the Center County Correctional Facility. And right to the north of the property is the Belfont Bowling Lanes. And if you're heading in the northerly direction, you're going to make your way to the Dunkin' Donuts as well as the Sheets and Belfont. And if you're heading in a southerly direction, you're going to go by the Rutter's convenience store, and you're going to make your way toward the Nittany Mall. Now, the plan that was prepared by Penn Terr Engineering, it looks a little busy, but let me explain it because it'll 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 make some sense then. Right in the middle part of the proposal is the supermarket. And as we make our way counterclockwise, we're going to hit the office medical building. And then we're going to continue our way around the clock, and this is a fast food restaurant. Here is a fuel pump area, and we make our way. Then this is the coffee fast food restaurant, and then the other fast food restaurant. The proposal is showing three different means of access to the site with one off of Paradise Road and two off the Benner Pike. And the and the second one is they're proposing a traffic signal at that location, which is right then to give you a sense of where the traffic signal is being located. It's closer to the Belfont Lanes property. Now, this is going to be a two-step process whereby this is a preliminary plan, and they need to get this approved first because of the number of buildings being proposed. Once they get preliminary plan approval, then they can come in and submit a final plan. And it's at the final plan is where they can actually start constructing the improvements as part of the plan approval for the final plan. That is the synopsis of today's MOU, and I'll turn it over for questions.
I actually have one. I actually have one. What's you? You had mentioned that there's going to be a second traffic signal. That's kind of stacking them pretty close together compared to the one that we have for the county prison. Am I not correct?
The, as part of this proposal, the developer has been the developer, their traffic engineer, as well as Benner Township's traffic engineer, McCormick Taylor and Associates are all three were working with PennDOT to do what's called a traffic impact study. And the all three groups have concluded that it's not going to, that location of a traffic signal will be fine in relation to the traffic signal at Rissell Hill, Benner Pike, and Paradise.
How how far how far away will those traffic signals be apart? That's they are still going to be stacked in there pretty tight.
I don't have the answer to that. The scale is this is one to fifty. I I don't know, Steve.
I would have some concern over that personally, but that would be just my thought on it. I mean, there's already, you know, I would say an abundance of traffic signals in that that little stretch of road, so.
Yeah, the Steve, your concern is probably going to be one that a number of people have. And we, the county planning commission will not approve this without an approved traffic impact study that's going to be approved by PennDOT, Benner Township, and the developers engineer. So there will be a lot of traffic engineer folks looking at this proposal to make sure that that signal and the traffic flow going into the property and coming out are going to be safe for the Benner Pike.
Yeah, that can't be more than a couple hundred yards. That that in my guesstimate there.
I would probably guess you you're right on that, but I don't have the exact measurements on that.
Well, the the fact that we're having, you know, in terms of individuals and entities that are very familiar with traffic studies and how that's going to look, I think we, from my standpoint, I would defer to them, but I do agree with you, Steve. If we think about what's happening, I'm here. We're hearing a lot of fast food restaurants, which is which, you know, we we know there's hungry people in this area of the county, but think about what's happening on Atherton Street with Chick-fil-A, seen a lot of issues occurring there. And so potentially a traffic signal there would help to alleviate some of that. But again, this is just an initial, again, like you you said, Chris, this is a a preliminary land development plan, not final. So there's still conversations to be had in terms of with the developer and PennDOT. So I think we'd be keenly interested in what this is going to look like.
Thank you.
Sure, you bet. And then in terms, just out of curiosity, I'm sure I'm sure the answer is no, but never hurts to ask, Chris. Are any are there any names that can be attached to any of these stores or is this TBD? We we don't know who who? Yeah.
We have not been specifically told the commercial entities are going to occupy the buildings. However, when you look at the plan, one in one of the site data notes, it references the parking spots. And there is there's two electric, and I believe it's this area that is earmarked for what's called giant direct parking spots.
Oh.
So we have not been told any of the actual facilities, but the plan's been submitted, so that it is of record, and so it does reference giant direct parking spots.
Okay, so just to be clear, on the actual plan itself, public document, we can all see it right here. It says on it giant direct parking.
Yes.
But we're not making any assumptions off of that.
Right.
But we're just noting the track.
Giant cars perhaps.
Wait, what'd you say, Commissioner?
These might be very giant cars that.
Yes, yes, monster monster truck cars. That's right.
This this is a little more sense with the Giants move to the the Minecraft Giant on South Atherton that, you know, perhaps now placing another giant right in close to Belfont would would make, I think, a lot of sense. I think, Chris, this is a recognition of the continued growth, steady growth of the Greater Belfont area that Belfont is now going to have two pretty good-sized supermarkets. You know, right, right up close to the to the town, definitely within the the Greater Belfont region. I'm assuming when they say fast food restaurant, fast food restaurant, fast food restaurant, those are placeholders. I mean, I'm hoping maybe if they have a a local family-style restaurant that wants to locate there, they would consider that as well.
That's a good assumption. I I don't know. I don't know, Commissioner Higgins. I they they haven't really spent given us any indication of what what kind of commercial facilities are going to be in there. I would suspect that they have the supermarket as the anchor tenant, and it wouldn't surprise me if they already had two or three of those fast food restaurants already earmarked. Otherwise, they won't be going through and with the with the amount of development and the cost they're going to be associated with this without at least having somebody under contract.
All right, it just would be we the supermarket is great. It's a wonderful anchor. But, you know, it would be nice if there was some space available for local small business people to set up shop as well.
Right.
Okay, well, we we I think ourselves, the Board of Commissioners also, and of course, the Planning Office, you, Chris, and the community at large are going to be very interested in seeing how this develops and what this looks like. In terms of the timing, this is probably years in the distance in terms of opening, but still, this is a exciting thing to see for our community. So we we look for any other final discussion on this before we look for a motion to add it to next week's consent agenda.
Well, Chris, I'm wondering, are they putting in infrastructure for, say, electric vehicles? Or possibility of bicycle or pedestrian access to the area?
That's a very good question, and I got some answers for you. They are proposing two electrical charging stations right in front of the supermarket. They are also proposing a sidewalk all the way along the Benner Pike to connect to the existing signal, and then there's an interconnect sidewalks coming through the facility. And so there are pedestrian modes throughout the development.
All right, because it's it's a little bit of a stretch, but if somebody were to say want to walk from the Amberly Development over to the supermarket, that might be something that the Townships might want to work toward.
I believe that there is, yeah, it's getting very close to being able to have an interconnected sidewalk system all up and down the Benner Pike. It's getting very close throughout because each of the developments were were asking the developers to put in sidewalks to to start that process, and they're they've all been very accommodating, and it's working out well.
Yeah, I'm forgetting the name, but the large apartment building across from Sheets, I think, would definitely be within walking distance.
Yes, they have. That's Greystone Court. And they do. There is a sidewalk in front of there as well as in front of the Dunkin' Donuts, and it goes and extends, I believe, all the way to or should extend to the bowling alley. And so there's a little bit of a a missing gap at the Belfont Lanes to connect the Greystone Dunkin' Donuts area to this proposal.
So is is this something that as elected officials at the county and local level, we could perhaps talk to the developer about helping complete that last little missing gap? So the residents of Greystone could walk to the supermarket and medical offices?
The discussion can always be had. My guess is the developers will probably say, we appreciate that, but let they they want to work on their own development because of the added cost of the sidewalk. But that that's something we're always looking at is asking if we can get these interconnect interconnections and and get these sidewalks connected so we can get a full pedestrian system up and down there.
Right, because I I would think that the the residents of Greystone would and the broader neighborhood areas would would love the ability to to walk to a nice shopping plaza like this one.
Right.
Yeah, from I would agree with with Commissioner Higgins. From a customer standpoint, customer satisfaction standpoint, they could bring in, you know, hundreds of customers that could be easily in walking distance. So just, I think that would be an appropriate thing to ask. Ask them to see what their response would be. I would agree. In addition, we didn't talk about, maybe we did talk, and I missed it, Chris, but in terms of a a bus stop, cat bus, is there any is there any discussions about what that would look like, or when does that typically happen in this kind of development process?
We had a a meeting with the folks regarding this back in the middle, end of the summer, maybe July-ish. And comments were sent to CADA, and those comments were forwarded to the developer, and some of those comments were included some bus pull-off areas along the Benner Pike as well as sidewalks. The developer did address the sidewalks along the Benner Pike, but they did not address any of the cat of bus stop pull-off areas.
Again, to go to Commissioner Higgins's point about, you know, getting getting the surrounding area, you know, part of this, I I do think that there would be interest in having that that there. So I don't know if we could say we'd like to see a little bit more bus-friendly pull-offs or whatnot, but it does seem like that would be a a great a great thing to have as part of this project. Yeah.
Yep, and that that is another comment that we can see, we can ask that they consider that, but I'm not sure it's something that we can specifically require, but it's always something we can put on the put on a table and see how they react.
No, yeah, just again, just a a comment at this point. Yeah.
No, I I Commissioner Pike raises a great point, especially for some of the senior citizens in the area. The ability to use Canada and the Cattigo system would be helpful. Again, maybe a fine point, but if there is an office medical building there, can you work with the property developer to ensure that it's going to be easy for the county transportation buses and buses from retirement communities, et cetera, can do a very easy pull-up to the building so that the citizens can just get right off the vehicle and in a relatively flat surface, manage to get into the building.
Right, again, those are all great comments, and really do appreciate that. This is where it's in a preliminary plan, we're we're able to knock a lot of these comments out prior to them making the the final adjustments on the plan before the final plan comes in.
Okay, all right. Any other final discussion on this before we look for a motion? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Sure, give me a second. I'm trying to minimize the screen. So there we go, so that I can pull the agenda back up. Motion to add the memorandum of understanding for the Benner Pike Shopping Center to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
I it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, Chris, thanks again. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving into the grant section, we will welcome Ray Stalinas in to talk about the grant with DEP. Good morning, Ray.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning with regards to the PADEP twenty twenty-one mosquito disease control grant program. The total grant award for this year is eighty thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty cents. This is entirely state-funded through the period of January first through December thirty-first. Just a brief background of the program. The program covers not only Center County, but also Clearfield and Clinton Counties. Our planning office currently houses two part-time seasonal employees through the program. That would include one mosquito disease control coordinator and one field assistant. The schedule during the year is typically covered for larval and adult mosquito sampling, along with tick surveillance. Begins around April first and then through October thirty-first, or otherwise directed by PADEP. The objectives of the program are simple, to monitor local mosquito populations for the presence of West Nile virus. Part of the program as well as to purchase equipment and pesticide products for controlling those numbers, and then perform public outreach about added protections from being infected by West Nile virus. Just some brief statistics for Center County of last year. Six hundred twenty samples were taken in Center County. Out of those four positive samples were identified. However, no confirmed human or animal cases for West Nile virus were found. So the the just a simple overview of the program, and this will be considered for, I guess, E-signature coming up due by DEP on February twenty-second. So that's why we're asking for an approval of the grant agreement today.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Is there any final discussion on this in terms of the grant with DEP?
Um, Ray, just checking, I know at one point we were also covering nearby portions of other counties. Is that part of this grant as well?
Yes, Clinton and Clearfield.
All right, and we'll have some sort of interoperability agreement with them so that our costs for providing this service are covered?
Yeah, these are these costs are all covered by DPA DEP, so the test in those counties are covered by DEP as well.
All right.
Okay, hearing no further questions, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have a consent agenda here. We look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, for our ABCs today, we have an appointment to the Central PA Community Action Board, Michael Murray. We have a planning commission appointment in Deborah Simon Simonex. We also have for the General Authority and the IDA, Jack or John Enfield, reappointment. And then for the General Authority and the IDA, we thank Adrian Ekinlov for her service on both those boards. And we look for a motion to approve the appointments, reappointments, and term expirations.
Motion to approve the ABC appointments, reappointments, and term expirations.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving into letters of support, we have some from our Office of Aging and Adult Services, and we'll turn it over to Natalie.
I was actually going to have Margaret.
Oh. Okay.
Actually, she can do that.
Oh, sorry.
We're going to tag team this one. So I'll start out by explaining that we, the county's been asked, the Board of Commissioners has been asked for a letter of support for the Evergreen Heights Housing Development in Ferguson Township. At the same time, our Office of Aging was asked for a support letter and our Adult Services Office, and so we're just presenting them all together in one group this morning so that we have consistency across our offices, and Natalie will speak to the programmatic nature of the letters of support because they involve affordable housing, and that is of interest to our Adult Services and Aging Offices.
Thank you. So the proposed project is a forty-unit three-story affordable housing project specifically for ages sixty-two and up is their proposal, and they are looking for the tax credit proposals that you are allowed to do from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. And so to do that, they need to to supply these letters of support. And in particular, for the Office of Aging and the Office of Adult Services, it's the opportunity for any of the residents to learn about the services that that they're off, the offices both could offer to residents who move there. And so it is not in an agreement to to have to do those services. It's not us being the supportive service entity that PHFA programs require. That's through a separate agency in the community that will have to do that. But they look to the county for these types of support letters. PHFA wants to know that any outreach or supportive services that residents might need in that whole in that environment can be offered to them. So that's all the letter outlines is the opportunity for residents to learn and receive information and referral for those two offices, as well as the Board of Commissioners to support affordable housing located in Center County.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. Any questions, comments on this? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the letters in support of the Evergreen Heights Housing Development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, great. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Natalie. All right, then we have next would be a letter of support for the Ben Franklin Technology Partners, and I believe Commissioner Higgins is going to tackle that one.
Yes, Mike, this one is very exciting news. The Appalachian Regional Commission that I somewhat work with through the SEDICOG has a great grant opportunity that Ben Franklin Technology Partners will be taking advantage of. It's a total amount of funding of up to three hundred thousand dollars to attempt to retain graduates from local colleges and universities for local companies, most especially, of course, our entrepreneurial firms. We've got a lot of entrepreneurial companies here in Center County that are adding twenty percent, fifty percent, or even doubling their workforce annually. And these aren't two- or three-person firms anymore. When you have a bunch of companies that have, say, ten or twelve people on staff, and they're going to add five, ten, twelve people over the next year, it adds up very quickly. So they would like a letter of support from us, and maybe a slim possibility of a financial contribution, but at this point, it's a letter of support for the application to the Appalachian Regional Commission. We've been having a run of luck recently in receiving these grants, thanks in part to some work from SEDICOG. So it's it's nice to see that the Center County drought for Appalachian Regional Commission grants is is coming to an end. So I would urge my fellow commissioners to support this letter that will request up to three hundred thousand dollars of funding, which includes the local match to recruit and retain graduates of local colleges and universities. to, uh, recruit and retain, uh, graduates of local colleges and universities here in Center County.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, and so would, would all the funds be utilized, uh, in Center County or is this part, is this throughout the region?
Uh, this I believe is a, uh, Center County specific, um, application. I mean, it's possible that they might, um, talk with some students at Lock Haven University as well, uh, but it is, I believe, uh, Center County specific. They'll be doing uh, discovery days, uh, where, uh, local businesses can meet with, um, students who are, um, interested in careers in business, especially entrepreneurial. And then it'll also, uh, assist with the small business and, uh, startup career fair, uh, which again focuses on somewhat smaller companies. Uh, but again, recruiting, uh, local graduates from, uh, colleges and universities.
Okay. All right. It, in the letter, it, it has, I believe, a mention about, um, uh, in terms of the, uh, let me see here. Looking at it now, um, uh, Kane University, uh, or Kane, or I'm sorry, not Kane University, but the, the city of Kane and, um, uh, not sure where that's located.
All right. That one is maybe a little further afield. Um, but, uh, yeah, the, the focus to my knowledge is, um, they will be primarily working with Penn State. Uh, they would also, uh, work with some other relatively local universities, uh, to recruit talent, uh, primarily for Center County, but possibly for some other surrounding counties as well.
Okay. Well, no, it's great. You get, it's great partnership. Okay. All right. Super. Okay.
Yeah, fine. But that's great.
All right. We look for a motion then.
So, uh, motion to approve the letter of support for Ben Franklin Technology Partners.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Uh, for liquid fuels, we'll turn it back to, uh, Margaret for this one.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm requesting approval this morning for a liquid fuels application to Penn Dot from Boggs Township for stormwater upgrades on Second Avenue and Market Street in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the submission of the Boggs Township application to Penn Dot.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. And then, uh, to Margaret for an administrator's report.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to, uh, report as a follow-up to Thursday's Board of Commissioners meeting, at which time the board oh, approved the county's application to DCED for the Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. The application was submitted on Thursday and the very next day, Friday, we received the, uh, agreement for, uh, review and approval by the Board of Commissioners. That has been, the agreement's been reviewed by our solicitor and approved. The deadline for that, of course, is today. So this is on a very fast track. Again, this is approximately one point eight million dollars that will be made available to the hospitality industry, uh, within our county.
Okay. That's fantastic news, Margaret. Thank you. Okay. All right. We will, uh, go forward then and with the check run, Commissioner Higgins.
Sure. Nearly an average size check run of one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, for the check of the week, uh, it's actually several checks, um, to the Center County Youth Service Bureau, which we had mentioned earlier in the meeting, uh, totaling fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. That's a lot of fives. Uh, but for a broad variety of services, um, including, um, assistance with gambling addiction, um, uh, working with teens and, um, uh, preventing, uh, various, uh, family, uh, issues and troubles. So, uh, thanks to, uh, Center County Youth Service Bureau for doing a lot of work, uh, with the families of Center County. I'd like to make a, uh, motion to approve the check run dated in February twelfth.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Uh, moving into voter registration reports, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Gersham.
I do not have a report this morning. My computer, uh, system is not operational, so I am unable to access any data. So I will have to, uh, postpone until next week.
Okay. Not, not a worry. Look forward to that then. And we will go into executive session reports. Any to report, Margaret?
There are no executive sessions to report. However, the Board of Commissioners will meet an executive session at two PM this afternoon to discuss the personnel matter.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Margaret. Uh, we have the balance of our public meeting scheduled for this week. Also, uh, some upcoming election announcements. Today is the first day of petition signatures. So we, uh, help everybody stay safe during the pandemic and get the signatures to run for local office. Um, we'd also look for, at this time, any questions from the, uh, the press that's joined us this morning. Okay. All right. Seeing no questions at this time, we look for a motion to adjourn at ten thirty-six.
Motion, excuse me, motion to adjourn at, uh, no, I've got ten thirty-five. No, now it's ten thirty-six. Motion to adjourn at ten thirty-six.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Have a nice day, everybody.